Welcome to the seventh in a series of political candidate forums in advance of the August 23 primary election. This forum, a cooperative production of the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, the Tallahassee Democrat, and WFSU Public Media. Our candidates today are running for the Leon County School Board District One. I'm Tom Flanagan from WFSU Public Media. I'm joined by William Hatfield from the Tallahassee Democrat and Trish Neely from the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee. And we're going to be questioning the candidates on various topics of interest to voters right here in the Tallahassee area. So let's get a quick glimpse at our ground rules here and then go on and meet our candidates. William?
The candidates for County School Board District One, sitting left to right, are Anthony DiMarco, Mary Ann Arbulo, and Alva Striplin, who is the incumbent in this race. For those watching us on social media, please hit the share button and help all your friends see today's discussion as well. Here's how the forums are going to work. We will rotate which candidate gets to answer first. We have a lot of questions, so we're going to ask the candidates to keep your answers to about 60 seconds or so, sometimes shorter for follow-ups, and we have follow-ups. We will keep time, which we will ding a bell when your time is up. It will sound like this. You don't have to come to a dead stop right then, but finish your sentence and we're going to move on. In the middle of the forum, we will also have a lightning round when we ask you to keep your answers to just one sentence. At the end of the forum, we'll give you 90 seconds to make the case directly to voters and share your website or any other important information. Generally, forums go about an hour, sometimes a little bit over an hour 15 minutes, but we will try to keep it locked into that.
And if you're watching on Facebook and you have questions for the candidates, go ahead and type them in the comments, and we'll get to as many of them as we can. Time is really limited, so you can improve your chances of your question being asked if you keep it brief and please keep it polite. Make it a question applicable to all of the candidates. So, candidates, any questions before we get started?
Nope.
Okay, then let's jump in with that first question.
Yours.
Okay. All right, so Anthony, beginning with you, what is the number one problem in our school system? And how specifically would you address it? And you have one minute.
Oh, we may have a muted candidate.
Hold on a second. We can't hear your voice.
Can you turn on your mic?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Yes.
A Zoom age.
Sorry about that. I'm a little bit old for Zoomers, but I would say the number one problem in the district is the data security and personal information online. And bringing in a much stronger information technology force would be the way to remedy that.
Okay, for our next candidate, Mary Ann Arbulo.
Okay. I think teacher recruitment and retention is probably our number one problem, but that is more a symptom. So that kind of takes us back to the budget and making sure that we have the money that we need to fund our reserves, to make sure that we have teacher salaries, teacher and staff salaries in line with the market, and have the ability to bring teachers in that are highly effective.
And finally, to Alva Striplin, same question.
First, thank you guys for having us here today and providing this opportunity. As a former classroom teacher here in Leon County and as a board member who's been there for seven years, I can without a doubt say that the biggest problem is the learning losses we faced during the pandemic and the serious increase in discipline problems. We know our community is seeing an uptick in gun violence. We're seeing an uptick in crime, and a lot of that is due to juveniles activity in our community. I'm proud to say that the Leon County School Board under my leadership has partnered with Leon County Sheriff for the Boys and Men Mentoring Program. We've also implemented several additional steps to try to repair some of the damage that's been done over the last few years.
Okay, and then a follow-up. And Mary Ann Arbulo, I'll begin with you. The state recently released grades for districts and schools around the state. What's one or two things that jumped out at you? And you have 30 seconds.
Okay, well, we had an improvement from the prior year. Had the district been graded last year, they would have been a C district based on the scores. So we bumped up to a B. Historically, though, we're in a downward trajectory, both academically and financially. District One, in particular, I looked at our school grades, and 43% of our schools are rated C. For me, that's not acceptable. My perception of Leon County is that we're in a school district.
All right, and Alva Striplin, same question, please.
Yeah, I'll absolutely take a different spin on it. District One represents 22% of the student population in Tallahassee, but yet 50% of the students and families that reside in District One are represented by A schools. We are bordered by Gilchrist. We, DeSoto Trail, and Roberts are some of the greatest schools in our district, and that is home to District One, to the students and families in District One. We could not be more proud of the achievements. The second thing that stands out to me on that grade is Bond Elementary went up two-letter grades from a D to a B this year, and congratulations to Bond.
Thank you. All right, and finally, Anthony DiMarco, same question, please.
One of the things that stood out to me that was extremely unusual was before I even was able to pull the data, parents were calling across the district from schools that they usually don't call from, concerned about the slide and the school grades. Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. The state recently released grades for districts and schools around the state. What's one or two things that jumped out at you?
Yes, so those would be the more two things, then.
Okay.
All right, Tom?
All right, let's get into a little bit of state policymaking, if we could here. Governor DeSantis, of course, getting more and more involved in local school board races, and school board candidates across the state were recently sent the DeSantis Education Agenda Survey. Now, the survey gauges candidate stances on such things as face masks and charter schools, critical race theory, a bunch of other items. And this could possibly be a litmus test for any school board candidate who wants the governor's endorsement. So we have a couple of questions here. First, did you receive the survey? What are your thoughts on it? And what's your level of support for the governor's education agenda? One minute for that, then we have a follow-up, and Alva Striplin, we'll start with you.
Did I receive the survey? No. Do I support the governor? He is the governor of our state. I am sworn to uphold the law. As far as policy and the voters in my district, we represent 33,000 students in Leon County. I am here to represent those students and the families that live within Leon County and to meet their needs at our schools.
Okay, thank you. Mary Ann Arbulo, same question, please.
No, I did not receive the survey. And I agree with Alva. The governor is the head of our state, and we're going to abide by his policies and rules and regulations. There are things I agree with, things I don't necessarily agree with, but I represent the constituents in the district, and I believe in portraying their preferences and bringing their preferences to the table.
Thank you. And Anthony DiMarco.
I don't believe that I received it. I don't see it I did. I do not support the governor's current stance on public education. When you look at policies, it's rapidly defunding and rapidly removing services under the disguise of parental rights.
All right, we do have a follow-up for each of you on this one, and we'll start with you, Mary Ann Arbulo. The Moms for Liberty, a conservative group, has become a force in Tallahassee and around the state and nation. Would you seek their formal or even informal endorsement? Why or why not? You have 30 seconds.
I would seek anyone's endorsement if they believe in what I am saying and if they support my position on things, not the other way around, if that makes sense. So if Moms for Liberty find my message something that they agree with, that's great. I'm happy to have their endorsement, as I would the League of Women Voters, or the Tallahassee Board, or Realtors, or any other group who is looking at this race.
One quick follow-up. Do you believe in what they're saying?
If we isolate their message down to parents and the importance of parents in this conversation, I do support that.
Okay, thank you. Alva Striplin.
As long as it is legally allowed, I would accept anyone's endorsement. And I believe that all parents within our district have a right to come and interject their opinion at our meetings. We welcome all parents of every varying degree of opinion and background, and we want them all to come to the podium at Leon County School Board and them all to be heard. No one opinion is more important than any other opinion. I believe they're all valid.
Okay, and as William had already interjected there, agreement, personal, with their way of looking at the world?
I support all parents who want to come and share their opinion with us, especially about the upbringing of their children.
Okay, thank you. Anthony DiMarco.
So I can give you a really clear answer. Yes, Moms for Liberty sent me a candidate survey last week, last Friday, I guess after they heard me denouncing them as a hate group online, or on the radio, sorry. I don't support them, wouldn't seek their endorsement, wouldn't want it. I don't think they'd want my endorsement. You know, it's hard to isolate a message down when they're putting out messages like the Trevor Project is ruining.
Okay. And I'm going to jump in, just looking for a 15-second answer, jumping back to the governor's survey. Do you think that kind of survey is appropriate to have a governor at the top state reach down to the school board and solicit their viewpoints of a candidate? Mary Ann Arbulo.
I think the governor can do whatever he chooses to do.
Alva Striplin.
I would agree. There's definitely some conflict between local and state government, but he has the right to do that.
Anthony DiMarco.
Depending on your views in the state of Florida, getting an email from the governor every day can be kind of intimidating.
Thank you.
All right, so this question deals with the COVID pandemic and lessons that were One thing that the district did absolutely right and one thing the district got wrong. And Mary Ann, we'll begin with you, and you have one minute.
Okay. I think the district did a good job of protecting its students and staff and implementing policies and guidelines that they felt were appropriate. I think, you know, it's easy to Monday night quarterback, but I think looking backwards, creating this division between moms who want masks and moms who don't want masks, I think was a mistake and could have been handled differently.
Thank you. Alva?
Well, since I lived it, I will say the one thing we did absolutely right without a doubt was we kept our schools open. We are not seeing the learning loss in Florida like we are across the rest of the country. And not only did we keep the schools open, but we provided digital options, we provided blended options, and we provided in-person options. We gave every family the option that worked for them and for their child. I would absolutely stand behind that as one of my proudest moments as a school board member. What I would do differently, you know, I can't honestly say I would do anything differently. We did the very best we could at the time with what we had, and we tried to give everyone the right option. And it was the most difficult time I've had as a board member, absolutely, since the time I've been there.
Thank you. Anthony, same question.
I'd say year one, I don't think anybody really knew what they were doing. Everybody thought they had a very good idea of what was right. I think everyone was shown we're all wrong, and, you know, there is no one solution, as everybody said. Coming at it from a broad spectrum is really, you know, the way to do it. You know, year two was nice that Rocky...
Another Zoom age problem.
Yeah. Okay.
Think we've got to continue.
Yeah. So I do have a follow-up. Oh, Anthony, you're back with us. We lost part of that, but I have a follow-up, and let me go ahead and start with you. During some of the worst stretches of the pandemic, Leon County's school district often found itself at odds with the governor as well as state lawmakers. What would have been your advice to the superintendent during those times? And you have 30 seconds.
Just do what you feel is right in your heart and soul.
I didn't catch that.
Yeah.
Do what you feel is right in your heart and soul.
Okay, all right, thank you. Sorry, I just didn't catch it. Mary Ann?
Well, it's difficult to second-guess what the superintendent did. I don't think that's appropriate. He acted in what he felt were the best interests of his students and his staff. And I think the board supported that, and I think that was the right thing to do.
Alva?
It was, like I said, the most challenging time I can imagine for every school board and superintendent across the country, and ours is no different. One thing I wish he would have done differently is lean on the board a little bit more for our input and for conversation and collaboration on how to move our school district forward during that time. He made some decisions without us, and I was very vocal that I was not pleased with to not be included in some of those decisions.
Okay, thank you all.
All right. Lawmakers were very busy this session on the education front, so we've got a few questions on that. How should the school board respond to recent legislation restricting discussions about race, gender identity, and sexual orientation in public schools? Mary Ann Arbulo, we'll start with you.
Really? We're going to do this in three minutes?
What's that?
I said we're going to really do this in three minutes. That's a big question.
It's a big question.
Okay, it's a big question.
We're going to zero in on different facets of it.
That's okay. So here's my bottom line for this. The mission of our school district is to ensure that every student has a safe and welcoming and intellectually stimulating environment in which to learn. And I think if we hone in on those values, then we can stay within the law, as we must, but also take care of individual student needs at the ground level.
Thank you. Alva Striplin, same question.
So the governor and the legislature obviously have every right to outline their priorities and push them through as law. That's what they were elected to do. So my urging to our community and to the state would be that if you don't agree with some things that are happening, go and vote. Get involved at the state level. People come in lobby us at the local level, and often we don't have a lot of control. We are sworn officers to uphold the law, and we will continue to do that. But get involved in statewide races and go vote.
Thank you. Anthony DiMarco, same question.
So I think recent legislation is abhorrent. You know, the thing that nobody's mentioned is federal statutes and federal laws that are in, were in violation of currently as a result of trying to implement state laws. I think that, I mean, at the core, public education is, you know, foundational safety and equity. Those are two foundational needs for a high-quality public education. And if you remove equity from the foundation, then you can't deliver a high-quality public education. And all of that legislation does is remove equity.
Thank you. Alva Striplin, a follow-up on this. How should schools address topics and conversations around race and history at this point? And alternatively, how shouldn't they? 45 seconds.
So our schools are, we teach the curriculum as outlined by Department of Education. And if it is outlined by Department of Education as part of something that a history teacher needs to be teaching or is required to teach, then that teacher is teaching that topic. I would also say that our teachers, we urge them to keep their personal opinions and views out of the classroom as much as possible and understand that we're there to educate every child, every child, regardless of background, without discrimination, where they come from, what they believe in. We are there to provide sound education.
Thank you. Anthony DiMarco, same question.
So can you repeat the question?
Sure. How should schools address topics and conversations around race and history?
They should just have them. I don't, what do you mean, how should they address it regarding legislation?
Correct.
Yeah, again, that's what's problematic about the legislation is that we now have to have this conversation. We're not even sure how legally to do this. Like, the teachers are, like, statewide in fear of tripping over and accidentally pointing a kid to a boys' bathroom and not being mistaken for gender instruction.
All right, thank you. Mary Ann Arbulo.
I think we have to teach honestly. If there is a slant that's coming out of Tallahassee, out of the legislature, I think those are things that as a group, as an association, we need to object to, stand up, and let our elected officials know where we stand. There's nothing wrong with sharing experiences with your students within confines of appropriateness, very low appropriateness. And so, you know, to me, this becomes just one more distraction in our system.
Thank you. All right, we've worked our way through that. What's your message to teachers who are feeling vilified by recent rhetoric and this legislation? Alva Striplin, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I can absolutely address that one specifically with our recent passing of the LGBTQ guide. We know that our teachers are, they're begging for guidance from the district. How do I handle some of these situations? And we are not true leaders if we don't provide that guidance. And as difficult as it was, and as challenging it is as it is to make 33,000 students and their parents happy and meet all of their needs, that is our job. That is our job as leaders, to provide guidance to our teachers, so they know when to address a problem or when to send a child to guidance or to administration.
Thank you. Anthony DiMarco, same question.
My message to teachers is, don't worry, I'm here now. We support you 100% as we have in the past, I have always, and that's going to continue, but it's only going to get greater. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Arbulo.
Repeat the question for me, please.
What's your message to teachers who are feeling vilified by recent rhetoric and this legislation?
Well, I think it's unfortunate that any teacher's feeling that way, and it is up to the leadership, local leadership and state leadership, to make sure that our teachers are working in an environment that is conducive to success and to professionalize their role. And I'm not sure that we've done that, and I think we have a lot of work to do in that area.
Thank you. Last follow-up on this. Alva Striplin brought up the LGBTQ guide. What's your, the most controversial part of that has been the parental notification provision. What's your opinion of the parental notification provision in the school's LGBTQ plus guide? Anthony DiMarco, you want to start us out on this?
On the federal level, it violates the student's right to privacy of thought, student's right to privacy. It's extremely invasive. I mean, are we going to ask them to sit at the back of the bus next? You know, it's interesting that we're having this conversation three days after, was it 56 years ago, the Tallahassee City Commission enacted a ban on African-Americans using the bus.
Thank you. Mary Ann Arbulo, same question.
Well, I sat with folks at that particular board meeting from the LGBTQ group, and I agree with their sentiments that the guide in itself almost tends to marginalize those students and make it more difficult. And so I go back to, you know, if this is, if the goal is to mainstream, then I'm not sure the guide accomplishes that. But given that, I'm glad that the board approved the guide. It has flaws.
Thank you.
And I know they'll go back to that in six months and relook at it. So this is a work in progress.
Alva Striplin, same question.
Yep. As the only person here who actually sat through that, I can tell you that it is very challenging to meet the needs of all parent groups in our district and our students and to follow the Parent Bill of Rights, which we're bound to do by law. So that is why that was in there. We absolutely are taking feedback on the guide and are going to revise it again, but we did the very best we could with what we had to notify our parents, to follow the Bill of Rights, and to provide the supports needed for all of our students.
Okay, folks, an update on a perennial issue that has faced not only our district but every school district across Florida and beyond. And it's kind of timely. There is a new report that just came out from the Florida Education Association saying that statewide, we have approximately 9,500 teacher and support staff vacancies that are now open. So if I could ask each of you, and you respond in a minute here, what concrete steps do you think should be taken to attract and retain highly qualified teachers? Mary Ann Arbulo, we can start with you.
Well, I think we need to bring the fun back into the classroom. Teaching should be joyful, and it came from a teacher. And it's, I don't believe it is today. So we have crammed down so many things into the classroom that teachers are responsible for. I think we've structured them to death, and the students as well, which is part of why we have a discipline problem. So one of my goals is to bring more innovation into the classroom. Let's free up what teachers can and cannot do so that we can create children who are able to think independently, to work in groups where teachers can facilitate rather than lecture, more of a problem-solving type of instructional design that gives everybody an opportunity to shine. Just, it's a, think about if you were a teacher coming out of a teacher prep program today and you walk into a classroom and maybe you have a bad day, and you think about, is this what you want to do for the rest of your life, for the next 30 years? Your answer is probably no.
Thank you. Anthony DiMarco.
To address the teacher shortage, two concrete steps that I would put forward, one would be like a continuing education initiative where the district reimburses some amount to a teacher who stays within the district and continues their education. That way, we're increasing retention, you know, increasing their qualifications at the same time. So it's, you know, an investment, definitely. I'd also like to see a real board, a real committee of teachers that has... committee of teachers that has, you know, report time on the board, made up of actual teachers that meets and, you know, picked by teachers that actually have policy and be at meetings. Because I want to hear from the people on the ground the most, not just a three minute comment and then dang.
Thank you. Alva Striplin.
Raise salaries, period. It's super easy. We have got to get our teachers to the base of 47.5. We've got to find a way to do that. I've pressed superintendent on that, and he's given me some options. And I plan, fully intend on following up with that as soon as possible. These discussions with LCTA, what do they see happening? I want to input from our teachers. But we can't forget our bus drivers, our food service workers, our parent professionals, our guidance counselors, our secretaries, our bookkeepers. These are all supports around the school. So we've got to move all of them forward together so they can afford to live in this community.
Thirty second follow up on that. What is one way to quickly raise teacher salaries? Alva, we'll start with you on that.
So I was provided about six options. I'm not going to share what they were with you because I'd like to have that discussion with my other board members. But I have, I have asked for concrete, tell me what we're going to have to give. Don't tell me that we can't do it. Tell me what we need to do to get them there. And I have those options in the back of my mind. We're going to discuss as a board.
Anthony DiMarco.
Cut all administrative staff at the upper levels, salary back 50%.
Thank you. Marian Arbelu.
Well, you've got to take away from something else. And you, you have to use recurring income if you're going to have a stable financial picture and cannot be dipping into your reserves as we've done over the last year. So I think, not being privy, obviously, as Alva is to some of the superintendent's solutions, but there are solutions for this. And I agree with her that it's a, it's a critical area.
All right. We are now going to change gears a little bit and go into our lightning round, unlike past lightning rounds. I'm actually going to ease us into this a little bit with a 30 second question to begin with. Alva Striplin, what's one issue we aren't talking enough about in our schools? Thirty second.
We talk about so much, I'm having trouble finding what we don't talk about. Discipline. I think we need to continue to talk about supporting our teachers when they need to, when there's disruptions in their classroom. We need, we've got to give our teachers that support to deal with those issues so they can focus on the other children in the, in the room that need to learn.
Thank you. Anthony DiMarco, same question.
Lack of transparency and oversight.
Thank you. Marian Arbelu.
Okay. I would say that we don't talk enough about how education, how our students, how our students are changing in their way they're learning, and how we need to modify our means of educating them.
Thank you. All right. Now we're going to be in the lightning round in earnest. The way this works is I'll be asking a series of questions. We'll be going pretty quickly. Most of the answers will be yes or no type answers. And I will look for a sentence explainer afterwards. As we are in the presence of people who might be considered educators, we certainly don't want to encourage too many run on sentences, but I welcome an and a because. But let's keep it to maybe one of those each. We're going to start off really easy. Do you currently, or have you had children in the Leon County Public School System? And name drop those schools. Anthony DiMarco, starting with you.
Yes, two. One currently, one graduated, Lincoln graduate, and of course, proud Mustang for life.
Thank you. Marian Arbelu.
I have an A records IB graduate. I have a Florida High graduate. And then I have a grandchild in Buck Lake Elementary. And I have a middle schooler that's just rising into Swift Creek.
Thank you. Alva Striplin.
Six of them. You're going to have to give me more than 30 seconds.
Wow.
Three of them, Charles graduates. Shout out to Hawks, Eyes, and Deer Lake. One of them, a Lincoln graduate. Shout out to Florida High. Prior to that, one, a Leon graduate. Also shout out to Florida High before that, and one, a current sophomore at Leon. Hey, great. And how's it going?
All right. What is one book every student should read? Marian Arbelu, starting with you. One sentence.
Gone with the Wind.
What's that?
Gone with the Wind.
And why?
Lot of lessons in that book.
All right. Alva Striplin.
Shoe Dog.
And why?
Independent, entrepreneurial, get out there, get it done kind of book.
Thank you. Anthony DiMarco.
Catcher in the Rye.
And why?
It's an amazing story that I remember grabbing me when I was in high school. Exploration and finding self.
Thank you. Does a rainbow flag ever have a place in our schools? If so, where? Alva Striplin.
Any flags with personal beliefs in the classroom don't have a place.
Anthony DiMarco.
Yes, directly under the American flag, under the, I'm sorry, directly under the American state, local, county, and then rainbow flag.
Thank you. Marian Arbelu.
No, they do not.
All right. Are you open to metal detectors at our schools? Anthony DiMarco.
If we really felt they were necessary, if that was the only option.
Okay. Marian Arbelu.
Well, the problem, metal detectors have, serve a purpose. The problem is you start narrowing entry and exit avenues. So I do not support them.
Alva Striplin.
Yes.
Students walking out of classrooms for protests, should that be allowed? Or should the student be marked as an unexcused absence? Marian Arbelu.
Allowed.
Alva Striplin.
Not allowed during instructional time.
Anthony DiMarco.
Allowed. It's teaching civics.
Okay. At the midpoint of Rocky Hannah's second term superintendent, what letter grade would you give him and why? Alva Striplin.
A minus.
Because?
Could be a better communicator with his board.
Okay. Anthony DiMarco.
A B.
And why?
He could be a better communicator with his constituents, too.
Marian Arbelu.
I give him a B. And I would agree, communication and some of the actions.
Okay. How many school board meetings have you attended? And how many have you spoken at? And on what topics? Anthony DiMarco.
My gosh, I've lost count. Name, I think I've touched on just about every topic. Sixty, seven, I don't have any idea.
Okay. Marian Arbelu.
Attended one, and I've been watching them online. I have not spoken. I thought it was better to listen.
Alva Striplin, now I think I know your answer to this question.
Let me spin it, though. I get to answer something, don't I?
Go ahead and answer something.
In the past, since 2014, since I was elected to the board, I believe I've missed maybe four meetings due to illness or conflict in schedule. I do not miss meetings. And I, and I speak at all of them on a regular basis.
All right. What's one pledge you would make to voters right now that you will accomplish if elected? Marian Arbelu.
I have an open door policy. I, my, my phone number is public. And I encourage anyone that wants to talk to call.
Alva Striplin.
Raise teacher salaries to the base of 47.5.
Anthony DiMarco.
I'm going to say the same thing. My door is always open. And I really want to change the culture of retaliation. So we can have better communication from the top down.
Okay. Last question. What is the biggest part of your experience that qualifies you to be on the school board? Marian Arbelu.
Well, I am a former school board member and former superintendent to take the Jefferson County School District twice out of financial emergencies that I inherited walking in the door. So I am, and, and the second go around, we did that pretty much single handedly.
Okay, thank you.
That is my focus on, and that's my focus on the school budget here.
Alva Striplin.
Being a classroom volunteer, a product of Leon County Schools, I attended Kate Sullivan Raw and Lincoln, complete dedication to the Leon County School System. I was a teacher for Leon County Schools, six graduates from Leon County Schools. And I have never had to bail our district out of financial noncompliance because we have been financially sound since I've been there.
Thank you. Anthony DiMarco.
I would say that my current record speaks for itself. Generally, if you want to see a change, then you'll definitely see a positive change over here. There's, you know, my experience, I started off at Florida State University, National High Magnetic Field Laboratory, worked with Nikon Olympus.
All right. Thank you.
Educational.
Thank you. All right. We're going to keep things moving. And the league is going to have our next question. Y'all made it through the lightning round. That was fun. Thanks.
Okay, the issue of charter schools has been contentious. The board has a track record of voting against their approval, only to be then overruled by the state. What is your opinion of charter schools and the school vouchers? And you have one minute. And Alva Striplin, I'll start with you.
When I first joined the board, we saw a lot of for profit charters in our community. They would pop up, and then they would disappear, leaving our kids in educational distress. I am completely against that. Since that time, we've seen better models that are academically successful. We have a couple of models here in Tallahassee. School of Math and Science is an amazing facility. I've visited that. I've also visited Arts and Science. They also are a successful model. I would prefer that we see our charter schools pop up in areas of need. Math and Science is one of those. Tallahassee Classical has popped up in an, in an area that is surrounded by Title I schools. So they're supporting, as long as they support a diverse population, they are not there to make a profit, and they are fully invested in the complete education of their child. I, I am fine with that. They have a place in our community.
Thank you. Anthony DiMarco.
The charters are tricky. Charter school is not technically a public school. I don't think they're bound by the same regulations. I prefer that we just kept, you know, our funds inside of public schools. But that's not possible.
Thank you. Marian Arbelu.
I support school choice and charter schools, of course, goes along with that, as long as there's accountability and transparency. And the other piece is, I think that our charter schools are missing is that their mission really is to bring innovation into our schools. And when they don't do that, I think that's a lost opportunity, both for the charter and for the school district itself.
Thank you. So I have a follow up for all of you. The state has expanded school choice in recent years, and the district has attributed its expansion and students enrolling in private schools and charters as the reason for an 11.5 million budget deficit. Can the district get those students and funding back? And if so, how? Thirty seconds. And Anthony DiMarco, we'll begin with you.
If they've already enrolled and graduated, no, the district can't get that money back. If I'm hearing the question right.
Yes, we got, thank you. Marian?
Well, if this, if we get the students back, the funding follows the students. So that, they go hand in hand. If the question is, how do we get these students back?
The students and funding back.
And the, yeah. So we need to get the students. I believe that the students are leaving the traditional school district because they're seeking something more, something that they're not getting. So we need to get to the root of the problem. What's missing? Where is that gap? And how do we fill that? And once we do that, students come back, money follows them.
Okay, thank you. And Alva?
At the base of this conversation, we have to remember that it's about educating children. Let's not lose focus of that. The charter schools, we've been told, are part of Leon County Schools. So we will support them and support their needs, support their teachers, and support their families, just like we would our traditional schools. What people need to understand about charter schools is they, in the Leon County Public School System, we educate everyone, regardless of background, regardless of need, regardless of special abilities. In the charter school, they don't do that. So it does create a different environment that you're not, possibly not going to find in a public school.
Thank you.
One almost philosophical follow up here for 45 seconds. I mean, has the traditional idea of public schools run its course? And how do we, how does it need to evolve? Alva Striplin.
I hope not. I hope it hasn't run its course because we, again, we get back to, we've got to see every child succeed in education. We can't be kicking kids out just because they have a challenge, or a disability, or a discipline problem. We've got to find a way to meet that child where they are and provide for their education. But it is time for us to embrace. We've got to, this, this is the model that is, that our state is, is moving toward. So we've got to find a way to embrace that, meet our challenges and our differences, and just remember, this is about educating the child, every child.
Thank you. Anthony DiMarco, same question.
So my, my son is 13, and he's already a Twitter developer writing programs. And I think it's the curriculum that needs to change. I don't think like the core public school needs to change, but more the curriculum. You know, times have changed, and there's a lot of opportunities being missed introducing like high level IT stuff that kids flourish in.
Thank you. Marian Arbelu.
Well, I think this, our country is great, in great part because of our public school system. And I think that it's very important that we maintain that. But at the same time, we have to be open to change. Any closed system in education tends to be closed. If it doesn't get fresh oxygen, it will atrophy and die. So we've got to be able to, we have to not fear change, okay? And not fear failure. We have to try things that are different.
We've got a question from the Urban League for you folks. We often learn of weapons being brought to campus. So what additional measures are needed to protect the safety of all Leon County Public School students, along with teachers and staff? And 45 seconds, please. Mary Ann, we'll start with you.
Okay. So first of all, gun violence is a function of hopelessness, particularly in our youth. And we're seeing that. So we have to, I think as educators, it's our, our role to make sure that our, our children have a light at the end of the tunnel. And we do that through educating them about what their life can be, their future can be. And that, that means having success, being a productive citizen, and a good citizen of the world. So when we, if we can do those kinds of things, we're going to generally reduce violence in our schools. You cannot, and I don't believe that we should make our schools a prison, okay? And we're moving in that direction, and it's wrong.
Okay, thank you. Alva Striplin.
We've implemented so many additional safety features. I was driving past Kate Sullivan the other day and noticed the fencing outside that now has a opaque cover over it, cute with crocodiles on it. But it is there to protect the children from visibility from the outside. We've implemented mental, we've implemented safety guards in all of our schools. So we have additional security officers. It wasn't like that four years ago. We've added a single point entry for our schools, fencing, mass notification systems, additional security guards. But the root of the problem is their mental ability, is their mental wellness. We've, we've instigated mental wellness counselors in each of our schools. Every school has one now. We've got to focus on why children are acting out the way they're acting out. It's not about the gun. It's about the mental capacity, what's happening that makes that child want to reach for the gun and act out in that manner. So we've got to address both.
You indicated an openness to metal detectors in our schools. Is that something you would advocate if reelected?
Absolutely.
Okay. And Anthony DiMarco, same question here about beefed up security for schools.
So metal detectors will catch some incidents, but it doesn't stop the problem. I've worked here locally, immersed in what's happening in some of our schools. I grew up in a city similar, with similar problems. Really, it's, if you don't address the root, like in the community, where this is coming from and why, then it's going to persist, no matter how many metal detectors, or locks, or walls, or anything that you put up.
Okay, thank you. A follow up question for 30 seconds here, if we could. What could you, as a school board member, do to make significant reductions in bullying and also in and also enhance students' safety and well-being at the same time? Alva Striplin, you first.
Well, we talked about counselors back in the day, guidance counselors, they're really more academic. Now we have mental wellness counselors in our schools. But we also see some great success in creative models that involve peer support, the groups where you're allowed to share your feelings in a safe and secure environment with peers, whether it be peers in your same grade, or peers of another grade. But we need to show our teachers with creative, show our students with creative measures that other students are feeling the same thing you're feeling. It's okay to talk about your insecurities and the issues you're facing in our schools.
Thank you. Mary Ann Arbeloa.
Well, on a policy level, I don't think that we inform parents enough about what their options are when there is legitimate bullying. And one of the things I did in my own district was to get a forum up so that teachers, parents could actually report easily to the district incidences. But the other thing is, I think we need, you know, kids are great at managing themselves, self-regulating, if we give them the opportunity. And I think, so much of what Alva's talking about, the more we involve students in the discipline process, the better.
Okay. Thank you. Anthony DiMarco.
The problem that I think everyone's listening is that, like, the fights are starting on social media, not at the schoolyard, like, traditionally. So implementing safety and reducing bullying, stricter social media controls and oversight on, like, social media accounts for students.
All right. Thank you. Changing gears again, a 2017 study showed Leon County Schools were among Florida's most segregated. Have we improved on this over the last few years? And what more specifically should be done? We have one minute, and we're starting with you, Marian Arbeloa.
My perception is that that's probably not changed. And I think our school grades are a reflection of that as well. And one of the things that we can do is look at what we're doing in the schools in terms of, do we have the best teachers in our schools that are suffering, are falling behind? And if we don't, why don't we? Do we have the best leaders in those schools? And to be honest, partly, we may have, we may have just preference going on also. Not everything is based on economics and zip code. So there's not a straight answer for this one.
All right. Alva Striplin, same question.
Absolutely. We know it's an issue in our community, like it is in many communities. The way Leon County Schools has addressed it is by implementing creative programming in our schools, IB programs, magnet programs, things that bring kids from one district possibly to another school. Not only do we provide those programs, but we also provide transportation. We try to assist children who want to go to different zones. We want to see that collaboration and that diversity within our schools. We've also implemented the Student Advisory Council, and we ask for students to be engaged in this conversation. What can you tell us? We want to know from our students how we can address these problems, and we want to involve them in the conversation, and we do that.
Thank you. Anthony DiMarco, you're up next. Same question.
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Sure. 2017 study showed Leon County Schools were among Florida's most segregated. Have we improved on this over the last five years? And what more specifically should be done?
No, we have not improved. It's increased, ran charts and data myself. There's a lot that can be improved, a more equitable distribution of resources across the district would be a great start. You know, properly funding programs would be another start. There's so many different areas.
All right. Thank you. Anthony DiMarco, the same question here, or a follow-up on this. The latest figures by the state show that Leon County remains a minority-majority district. How does that shape your approach for this seat? 45 seconds.
It doesn't. I mean, I've known that for years. That's not new information.
All right. Thank you. Marian Arbeloa.
It doesn't change my position. As I stated earlier, our mission, we execute it to provide a safe and welcoming and intellectually stimulating environment for students to learn, and that applies to all of our students, whether they're on the north side or the south side. Everybody deserves a world-class education.
Thank you. Alva Striplin.
Agreed. It doesn't change the way I run or campaign, or my actions on the school board currently. I'm there to represent District One, but also all families and all students in Leon County Schools.
Excellent. Thank you.
Another question from the Urban League. Should the school district expand vocational training at the high school level? And if so, in what ways? Anthony DiMarco, we'll start with you.
Yes, and they should, I think we should bring in more, a more diverse set and more updated set of, like, career choices. And I don't mean to keep skipping back to information technology, but that's just something that's available and easy to do at school. And it's extremely high-paying, machine learning, AI, that's all going to be the future. Kids pick us.
Thank you. Mary Ann Arbeloa, same question.
Absolutely. And often, we think of vocational programs as, you know, a school offers welding, or offers HVAC repair. I take a different approach. I think the world is changing so quickly, and let's give our students the opportunity, especially in high school students, the opportunity to explore and become entrepreneurs. 98% of Florida businesses are small businesses. Why not expose our children to the mechanics of how businesses work and run? I would love to see a model school where we actually provide goods and services in that school in a real, in a scaled-down manner, almost a microcosm of the economy.
Thank you. And Alva Striplin.
Absolutely. We should, and we have been expanding our vocational training. We have a pilot program at Gaby where it feeds automatically into Lively. So a great partnership between Lively and Gaby High School. And we're implementing other partnerships around the district, not just at that one high school, but in other schools, and dipping down into the middle school where those vocational programs are introduced at a younger age.
Thank you.
All right. Y'all made it. So now we are in our closing arguments phase. This allows you to speak directly to voters. You can share your website, if you like. It's your 90 seconds to talk directly to voters. Anthony DiMarco, you will get us started, and then we'll go down the line.
This is Anthony DiMarco, running for Leon County School Board, District One. You can find yourself at DiMarcoForBetterLeon.com, on Twitter, @DiMarcoForLeon, Facebook, all over the place. Just hashtag @DiMarcoForLeon, Google @DiMarcoForLeon, I'm everywhere. And I'm looking forward to being the next District One rep. Thank you.
Thank you. Marian Arbeloa.
First, I want to thank the Tallahassee Democrat, the League of Women Voters, WFSU, for holding the forum. It's invaluable for candidates. I've been working for students' benefit for almost two decades. And with your vote, I believe I bring diversity to this board that's important. I have a different life experience, a different set of skills. And I believe those will bring value to the board as we move forward in this critical time. If you want to learn more about me, my website is momforschools.com. That's momforschools.com. And my phone number is 850-528-5758. And I look forward to hearing from any voters in District One who want to share their concerns, have opinions. That's a 24/7 number, so I appreciate being here, and thank you. And I ask for your vote on August 23rd in the primary. Thank you.
Alva Striplin, you get to close us out.
Thank you. I'll close you out as the only candidate here that is a product of the Leon County Public School System, a former teacher of the Leon County Public School System, and the mother of six Leon County Public School graduates. Under my leadership during the past seven years, we've increased safety at our schools. We've put more emphasis on the mental wellness of our students, and we have given raises, not just to our teachers, but to their support staff, every individual that works within the Leon County School System. More importantly, District One has seen great academic success over the past eight years since I've been there. 50% of the students and families in District One represent A schools within our community. I could not be more proud of that fact. This is not the time for a change in leadership. Under my leadership, this district is more financially sound than ever. I'm so honored to have the endorsement of the Leon County Teachers Association for the third campaign in a row, nonstop endorsement since 2014. That's the most important, because I am a part of them, and I'm so grateful for their support, as well as for Lespa, their partnership organization. I appreciate your support in the past, and I ask for your vote again for the next four years. Thank you.
That brings us to the close, folks, and our thanks going, of course, to the Tallahassee Democrat, the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, WFSU Public Media, and our candidates for joining us for this program. You can find a replay of the forum on our YouTube pages at tallahassee.com and also wfsu.org. The recorded broadcast will be this Thursday, July 26th, at 11:00 a.m. That will be on WFSU 88.9 FM.
And our next forum will be tomorrow, Wednesday, July 20th, at 1:00 p.m. And it will be with two candidates for Tallahassee City Commission, C3, David Bellamy and Jeremy Arthur Matlow.
And we're always looking for your questions as part of our forums. You can easily email them to news@tallahassee.com. You can also stay with the latest breaking news and all sorts of news from the campaigns at tallahassee.com. You can also look for a special election section of the Tallahassee Democrat with interviews with all the candidates on the ballot. That will be printed and inserted in the Sunday, August 7th paper. I want to thank the candidates for joining us, all those viewing out in Facebook and YouTube land, and the cast and crew here at WFSU makes this all possible. Thank you all, and have a great day.